Says that she's running late.
Tied up, yeah.
Yeah, she was at, um...
Went to Bill, you went.
Recording in progress.
To, uh, the senators' activity.
Turned seventy today, so...
Well, I think we're... So, yeah. So, good evening, everybody. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm serving as mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Selke Pope, council member.
Amy Nissel, council member.
Okay. So, any information items for later in the meeting?
I don't have an information item, but I would like to talk about fire services and just awards as the year comes to an end.
Thank you, thank you.
And I believe Ms. Pompey and Ms. McKinney are both running a little bit late, but plan to be here.
Okay, okay. Hey, well, let me just start off and say that we hold work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or to gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. We don't take votes or formal actions at work sessions. These work sessions, as well as our meetings, are open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that residents and others can observe council's deliberations. We do strive to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment, probably every twenty minutes or so. During these times, if you wish to address council or to make a statement, raise your hand if you're in the room, and after being recognized, if you go to the podium, please state your name and where you live, more or less. Where you live in Greenbelt, we need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, use the Q&amp;A tab at the bottom of the screen to submit a written question, or raise your virtual hand, and after being recognized, once again, state your name and where you live, and we do need that for the minutes. And finally, if you're watching on Facebook, and I think we're streaming on YouTube and cable TV, if you send us an email, we'll try and pick that up. The email address is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So, with these comments, please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others, and just in general, you know, we're all neighbors here, so please, let's be civil in our remarks. So, tonight, we have a very interesting work session. It's a two-part work session. We'll be going into an executive session later this evening, probably around 8:30. But the first part of the work session, we're going to be talking about traffic ordinance, and that has to do with the traffic enforcement mechanisms that we have, the speed cameras, parking for EVs, and also a little bit about the school zones. So, and the school zones, that has to do with stop sign monitoring and ordinance we're considering. We've gotten authorization through the state to actually establish some zones where we can use these stop sign cameras to try and get a better handle on some of the folks that don't stop at stop signs, and it's a really big problem. It really is. So, we're joined by our chief, police chief, but I'll just kick it over to Mr. Sammron initially. How are you doing?
I am great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. What we envision today is, we've got a couple of traffic enforcement-related items. Two of them are tied together. For example, the stop sign legislation, which council has shown support for, will require two, there's two components to adopting that ordinance. That will be, one, establishing the school zones and establishing the language for authorizing the stop signs. Part of that process also entails going to the county requesting authorizations of where to place those stop signs. The other issues council have raised have been around the EV parking ordinance. There was also a conversation about reviewing our speed monitoring systems and program, which chief is going to go in great detail, as much detail as council wants to get into on these different programs. But we have draft legislation or sample legislation for the stops on cameras and the parking. We would like council's direction on the other items, such as EV parking enforcement, and then parking in other areas of the city. There were items raised about commercial vehicles parking in different residential zones. We would like to get some direction on council on what invasions there. We talk in trailers. There's been talk about even zone permits, which I think will be a challenge to implement in the city. So, part of this, we'll go in detail into the items identified in the packet, but the other items, we hope to get some direction for council so that we can bring language and ordinances to council related to those. Did I miss anything, Chief? And Chief, thank you for joining us tonight.
The covers everything.
Well, Chief Bowers, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you with us. So, let's dive right in. I think you've got some sort of a PowerPoint presentation that you want to share, but do you want to give us some context?
Absolutely. That'll give us a little background as we work our way through the couple of topics that we have. So, we'll jump right to the second slide, which is on the EV parking ordinance. As you know, we have a number and an increasing number of electric vehicle charging spaces going in behind the library on the city parking area. One of the things that we discovered, particularly with the space out front, is we do not have any sort of restrictions on who actually can park in that space at any given time. While it's intended to be for a vehicle that is charging, there is no actual rule or city code that would restrict who could park there. The state does have a section of code that pertains strictly to EVs, but the thing to note with that is it is in the transportation article, and while a police officer could write a state citation, just like a traffic citation, our city parking enforcement staff cannot enforce that particular code. So, looking at that section of code and what some other municipalities have created, there's some sample draft legislation of what we could do if city council was interested in establishing a city ordinance code in our parking section. That would prohibit parking in an EV space unless the vehicle was charging. And then there's a time limit to it. It's a two-hour max. It's got to be posted in a particular way, and the ordinance is that the vehicle must be charging while it's at that space. If it's not charging, then the vehicle would have to be moved from that location.
Yes, Pro Tem?
Yeah, and I think this, we may need to make distinctions between the different types of charging stations, and I think that's something we're going to, because for the fast charger out here, it'll only charge for an hour on a cycle, and then you would have to come back out to it and restart it, and that on the fast charger, that's usually enough to get things. And so, I think we need to think about for the charging stations that we're putting in, because I think two spaces will be for the fast chargers, but the rest will be level two chargers and might not warrant the same two-hour limit, because those are slower chargers. So, I don't know how we want to think about that. I mean, maybe four hours? I'm not sure if we necessarily, like, I think, I think, because I know you have an EV charger. I have mostly charged at home on the really slow charging, or on the fast charger. I haven't actually used that many level twos.
And I think it gets a little more complicated, too, as we carve out for level twos, level threes. We also have charging infrastructure that we don't own or operate that is on city public right of way. So, the GHI, the charging stations that are coming off GHI property. So, there's, I believe, three charging stations that are on Ridge Road that have been with GHI. So, there's other extension. But I think with the time limits, the two-hour charging, even for level twos and destination, have been sufficient. The, whether my vehicle doesn't charge fully in two hours, but typically, that's not what destination chargers or a lot of them do. We could also time it where during the day, it might be limited to certain hours, and then in the evenings, more hours could be allowed. And I think from a practical enforcement perspective, if someone goes in to charge to plug in at midnight.
Right, and I don't know that our code enforcement is really doing 2:00 AM coded traffic check, parking check.
No, well, we've seen that it can be a problem. There's a couple of occasions where I've seen vehicles parked right here behind the municipal building during the farmer's market, and, you know, there's another, there's an electric vehicle that needed to charge, and they were waiting about forty-five minutes. I think it's happened over at Franklin Park, the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. It's probably happened at Schramm Hills as well. For the chargers that are on Ridge Road and GHI, maybe there's, maybe we can create some different zones. That's sort of a residential charging zone.
I think part of it would be who owns the infrastructure, right? So, city-owned infrastructure is easy for us to, on city property, to dictate, you know, how long we can establish a parking zone for. If it's on private property, you know, if the Royal Farms puts in chargers, then that would be governed by them, because it's on their private property, right? So, if it's private property, you know, that owner of the property sets the rules for its usage.
But two hours, you know, or tying up a space for four hours, that's a long time, and if there's several vehicles trying to get in, maybe, you know, a two-hour charge isn't enough to charge the battery completely, but maybe that's the amount of time that we want to allocate if somebody else is waiting. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I'm wondering about the chargers on Ridge. Aren't they on GHI property, or some of them on city right of way?
So, the two chargers on one section of the properties, they're at the ends of the curb cuts of the parking spaces, so that those parking spaces are half GHI, half public right of way. There are two spaces at both ends that those are completely on public right of way. Those are part of the road parking spaces. So, if you can picture that section, there are several parking spaces that you pull in.
It's up near, I assume you're talking about the ones near Laurel Hill Road, or?
Yes, yes. So, there's a section of pull-in parking spaces, and at the end of those parking spaces are those that are parallel parking spaces. So, those that are parallel parking spaces, those are on public right of way. The other pull-in parking spaces, half of them are...
Ones where they're parking in towards the house, that's GHI property, right?
About half and half. And then the other two are on...
How can it be half and half? That's kind of weird.
Yeah, because the way that road is cut, I think if we did a survey of the property lines, I would say that most of it...
Aren't they marked for the members, though? Or don't they have...
Yes, those pull-in parking spaces are.
Yeah, they're marked for each member.
Yes, correct, correct.
So, that's up to the member to take care of that.
Those that are pulling, yes. How do we want to treat the ones on the side? And this is just in response to...
Who paid to put the ones on the side? Those members?
The infrastructure was put in all by GHI members. They paid for that infrastructure. The relationship with the city is that there's a MOU about...
So, does that MOU give them the right to park there all the time, you know, as if it's their space, or?
No, no, the MOU does not explicitly grant that public right of way for their exclusive use. Actually, part of the MOU states that there's no parking enforcement for that, for other vehicles parking in those spaces that are public right of way.
I think that's kind of, like, become a problem. I don't know. Maybe not.
It hasn't been a problem to date. There hasn't been an issue, at least that I'm aware of. I don't know if chief, have you had any...
We haven't had any issues with it.
Jenny, did you want to go?
Just a clarifying question. So, the two spaces that are parallel spaces, are they still reserved only for use by GHI members?
I think that's the majority of the users, if not exclusively.
But anyone could, you know, Mayor Pro Tem could technically charge there. Okay.
Yes, and in fact, I think, you know, I, some of the commentary I heard from the members who were involved in those installations, that they welcome EV users to come use those charging stations.
Well, I think it seems like the lesson is that we need to make sure that we consult those people, whether it's GHI, but also, because I know at least, well, I know at least one of the people who installed one of those level-two chargers, and he welcomes other people using it, but it is one that he paid to put in, and I think draws off of his electricity. So, I think we should make sure that we get those stakeholders involved and make sure that whatever we plan out isn't going to cause further problems. I think the other thing I would comment related to the charging infrastructures, I think some of the fast chargers actually will, the companies will charge you a fee if you park at the charging station and utilize the charging station longer than the time for charging. Like, there's some of them, like, if you get up to either your time allotment or up to your full charge, and then you have like a fifteen-minute grace period, and then if you don't unplug your vehicle, you start getting a penalty. So, and I think, I don't think the one, the one right outside the municipal building, of course, we don't have the other ones in yet, but that, I'm not saying we shouldn't have also our own parking ordinances, but there are some of the charging infrastructure systems that build in a penalty for people who monopolize the charging spaces.
And this goes back to what Rick was saying, that if we, sorry, the chief was saying that if we own that infrastructure, we have a little bit more control. The app, the platform that is going to power those stations at the community center, we would have the ability to set the rate and set other idling time, for example. So, there'd be idling time and extended time parking. And the difference is, if you are plugged in and your car is 100% charged, there could be, there's a charge for idling, for just sitting in the spot, not charging, and then there's another rate that you could charge for somebody parking beyond the two-hour limit, or whatever limit we set.
So, what if someone is sitting in there without it plugged in? See, I mean, once they cut the connection off, then you don't know really what car is sitting there, right? Or doesn't have a camera.
And that's where the parking ordinance itself would come in.
Yeah. Ms. Pope?
Yeah, I think it sounds, it can get very complicated. I have a feeling, you know, like, the two hours and the four hours, and you can charge it. So, I would believe that we will try and to make it as easy as possible and not get too, so people don't get too confused. But, you know, I understand we can regulate it, and we can set it, and the fee for the evenings and whatnot, but it does, I think, making it too complicated might be a little complicated.
And we can find, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to include a time limit. It could be you can only park here while charging. The officer may or may not know if the vehicle appears to be plugged in, they're not going to know if it's fully charged. They're just going to assume that it's charging and move on. So, there's a lot of different ways to craft it, you know, with your guidance and direction. We can come back with some piece of draft, if that's your will, that falls within that scope. I think the one thing to note about parking ordinances, generally speaking, with few exceptions, city parking ordinances only apply on city streets or city-owned property. So, if it's a shopping center, you know, it's the Greenway Shopping Center, and they install a device, we don't have any authority over the parking at that device. Fire lane handicap, yes. Anything else, no. So, that applies to pretty much all private property. The city parking ordinances only apply to roadways owned by the city or property owned by the city.
But I think a two-hour limit is a good, yeah, seems reasonable for two hours. And I know we did have that issue with the parking spot right here during the hours of the farmer's market. I've heard that as well a few times. And for GHI, I know that, like Mayor Pro Tem was saying, I think some of the people, or a few, had installed their own charging station, right? So, this would not apply to, we wouldn't be able to encroach on that and include that in our enforcement.
I think we can exempt some of it. So, up on your screen, here's one of the installations. So, this also applies to Mr. Roberts' question. That parking space that you see right here on the road, that's public right of way. The city will have jurisdiction over that. The parking spaces right here that are marked reserved, these are spaces for the exclusive use of GHI members. We would not be looking to address or resolve any issues there. We wouldn't look to apply the law to any of that. It would be, what would the city want to do? What would council want to do with that space that is on public right of way? Do we exempt it or not?
Well, if this charger, like Kristen said, you know, if that's connected to the homeowner's electricity, then it should be marked private, and nobody should be able to charge there.
Right, and we don't regulate the charger. That's not ours. What the relationship between the city and the GHI members are, that there's an MOU to put that on public right of way, the charger.
Right, right, right.
But the MOU does not give them that parking space for their exclusive use. They acknowledge that that remains a public parking space.
Of course, you know, the question of enforcement also comes up, and so, we pass this ordinance, and it's a two-hour limit, but, you know, our police officers, is it code enforcement that would actually come out?
We have a parking enforcement officer.
Parking enforcement, so they would come out and get out of the car and look at the charging station to see how much time has elapsed, or really, realistically, if somebody's going to call, hey, there's a car parked here, they're not moving. So, the two hours is kind of flexible.
Generally speaking, enforcement of any sort of houred sort of parking is difficult in nature, because you don't know when that person originally got there. So, you can't just issue a citation for violation of two hours unless the writing officer can clearly document that the vehicle's been there for two hours. And the way they do it is they take a picture of the wheels, so they know, and then they come back two hours later. If the vehicle's still parked there, they could issue it a citation. Really, what you're looking for is some voluntary compliance to the time limit, rather than having to enforce it. But it's the while-charging kind of section, which gives us a little teeth, so that way, if there is a complaint that, hey, this vehicle's occupying this space, it's not plugged in, it gives the officers or the parking enforcement officer some leverage to get the owner to move that vehicle.
So, if it's parked there and it's not plugged in, or it's parked there and it's not an electric vehicle, then the officer, the parking enforcement official can just write a ticket?
Absolutely.
Right, okay. So, the two hours makes more sense in that context, because...
Right.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, I guess, going back to the example that Mr. Sammron had on the screen there, I guess part of it is, do we designate that spot as an EV parking, the one adjacent to the GHI unit, should that be designated as an EV parking spot or not? Or even though it might be accessible to the charger, but do we designate that as an EV parking spot if it's up to the GHI user, if they want people using it? And I'm not sure, and I think we need to talk to them about that. Like, if it's designated as an EV charging spot, that sort of, I feel like that could open it up to people who don't realize that it's sort of a privately-owned, like, electricity going to it, whereas if we don't mark it, they don't get the protection, the two-hour protection, but they also maybe, I mean, there could be somebody who could go and plug in, but I think if you mark it as this is an EV charging spot, I think it's more likely that somebody is going to go and charge their car. And then the other question I had, for the charging stations that end up on private property, is that something that the private owners say, it's, you know, Beltway Plaza installs some charging stations? Can they authorize the city's parking enforcement to help them with enforcement, or is that not something you would even want to get into?
Well, that's not something I think we'd want to get into, and generally, they wouldn't be able to give us that authority.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Before I respond, Ms. Nissel, I saw your hand up, Drew.
Well, I, given that we're, it just feels like sometimes we're focusing a lot of the discussion on kind of very, very outlying situations that we could just talk to one or two specific people about. So, I didn't want to draw us too far off topic, given that these are privately-owned chargers, and any discussion about putting a sign near them would be a discussion had with the owners at a further date.
That makes sense, yes. So, this ordinance, would it be for per parking space, or would it be EV parking zone? For example, we are going to have several spaces there behind the library, and right now over Schramm Hills Park, I guess, there are four spaces, five spaces?
At Schramm Hills, we have four. Four charges at Schramm Hills, one at Spring Hill Lake.
Yeah, and it would be per space. Each space would be marked, just like a handicap space would be marked. Each one will be appropriately marked as, under the requirements for the state law, and then that would give us the ability to enforce the city code there.
So, I keep hearing about passenger vans and larger vehicles coming out now that are electric vehicles, and they might require more than one space, or, that's another outlying situation, I guess. So, let's go ahead and do this, yes. Mr. Roberts, please.
I just want to say, I think we should, I like the chief's, you know, the thing of just having it, say, you know, parking only while charging, because if you try to put an hour limit on it, first, I don't think it's really necessary, because I think all the chargers are limiting you to when you, they're only giving you so much, right? You know what it is, two hours or whatever, then it cuts off.
It depends on the charger.
You could come back and redo it, but...
It depends on the charger.
Most people are not going to do that. So, but I would think most of them would have a mechanism where it would cut off, it would only charge so much. I don't know. I'm assuming that. But the other thing is, man, wouldn't it be nice if the cars just had their own charger? You know, I've worked on the other, you know, stuff, electric stuff, forklifts and golf carts, all kind of stuff like that. They all have their own charger. You just plug it in. You know, if they had that, we could just go along the streets and have a few outlets, you know, and next to all the parking spots, people just park, plug it in, you know? It's like, but I guess it's, you know, it's more, it costs more to build the car that way, but it would solve a lot of problems.
I have seen a car, an electric car parked into one of our light poles.
Well, and I think, I was going to say, Mr. Roberts, you can, I mean, I...
Please don't say that publicly.
I charged my EV from the outlet in my garage, so you can charge the car from, just directly from an outlet like that. It just takes it a very long time. So, that's why you do these level-two and level-two chargers.
If it had a built-on charger, you know, it would speed it up, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it has to do with the power flowing out of the outlet. The outlet is just slow. You can do it, but it's slow.
Have a transformer, though. You can transform that power from, you know, 120 up to 240 or whatever it is. Transformers are wonderful, yeah.
I think it's important, though, for these spaces to circulate, so, you know, I think the two-hour, I think it's good for two hours, yeah.
To respond to Mr. Roberts' concern about just what vehicles are charging, the idea of putting a time limit on the time that a vehicle sits in a parking spot is so that it allows more people to use the charging station. And I think that's been the issue. Why this came up is somebody needed to charge, and the parking space was not available.
The quality issue, I think, that everybody has.
Urging people to move on, like, maybe they park there and they just leave it there for four hours, just because they want to be around. It's more like, so people are like, I can only stay for two hours, and then I should leave.
You're saying that they're charging their car, and then they just need to sit there afterward, or what?
Yeah, I think that's the problem, that the two-hour limit would...
It's a lot like a restaurant. You're trying to turn tables over. If your staff, you want to get as many people through that table in a night as you can. Same thing applies to the EV chargers. You want as many people, the opportunity to use that charger during that peak time as you can possibly do that. And by limiting the amount of time one person can monopolize it, you give everybody, you get more people an opportunity to come in to get their vehicles charged.
Do that by having the machine only allow a two-hour charge, or whatever it is you want, right? I mean, if it can only, if it can only charge for two hours, you know, they're not going to, they're probably going to move after.
Charge and then unplug and restart, and, yeah, there's ways around anything, and again, you're really looking for self-compliance, rather than enforced compliance from these things.
With a lot of these things, just the threat of a compliance citation gets people comply and self-regulate.
And have something in place in case we do need to intervene in a situation. I mean, if we have nothing, then there's not, you know, what do you do? Your hands are tied, but if you have something in place, at least you can intervene and take care of business.
And we've had some calls for service with the current systems, and there's really, there's very little the officers have been able to do, because we do now have some signage, which helps with the enforcement piece, or getting some compliance, but without signage or some mechanism by which to get compliance, you know, somebody could go, well, I'm not going to move my car.
And the fine, and then the sign, is this going to look like this?
Dollars. So, they'd get a citation, and then they would either go to the website or come to the police station to pay, and if there was a vehicle, and it was parked, and it was documented, you know, it's been there for two hours, they'd get a citation, but I suppose the car could be towed or something after a certain amount of time.
Wouldn't, after a certain amount of time, sure. The two hours wouldn't meet the window for towing under our requirements, but if it was there, let's say, 24 hours, then we'd have the opportunity to tow it. And the fines is kind of blocked out right now, because that would be something that would be set by council.
Right. Any other comments? Yeah, Ms. Pope?
No, I just want to make sure that, you know, and the fine, is the sign going to be like this? Are we going to have the amount of the fine in case you get, just like when you're going to a handicap space?
Yes, ma'am. That's what's required by the... Yes, yes ma'am. That's what's required by the state code on the signage for, for those EV chargers.
And you know, in, in my town, in, in Germany, my little town when I was a little girl, we had one parking guy that always came around. He was the most hated person in this town. I'm not kidding. He had a little piece of chalk and he would go around and, and chalk the tires. And then he would, you know, come by again and come by again and see if you've not moved. But yeah, he was not very much liked.
All right, quick question. So after they are cited, the fine, what happens? Can they get towed?
Potentially give it towed. So typically, if you get a parking citation in the city, you do have an opportunity to appear on Maryland District Court if you would like to stand trial. In which case, the parking enforcement officer or officer who wrote the citation would appear, testify as to why they issued you the, the fine. Judge would either find you guilty or not guilty, fine you, and then add court costs to the fine. Because court costs are $25 in addition to the fine that's imposed. And then, you know, you, you'd be found guilty that way. Or you could come to the station and pay it. If the car sat for an excessive amount of time, it could be subject to being towed. And the city code, and we have policies on, on the towing of vehicles for parking violations.
So, so if it's a, if it's not an electric vehicle and it's parked in a spot and it sits there for two or three hours and, you know, it's documented that it's been there for two, they just get a ticket, they don't get towed?
We would, we would need to specify that in the ordinance of when a vehicle could be towed. I think that would be the, the best practice. If we want to be able to tow from an EV space, then we should lay that out within the ordinance itself.
In, in that example, according to the state code now, that vehicle will be subject to citation right away. It's not plugged in. It's parked in an electric charging station. It's not charging. Calls for a citation. Did I state that correctly?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Mayor Porte.
Yeah, so I guess if that should be stated in the ordinance, and also do you have, do you have, would you recommend 24 hours?
I would recommend a, a longer period of time. I mean, we do have some provisions in the code now for when a vehicle can be towed. I would want to review those and make sure that we ever, we put into it would, would make sure we stay in compliance with that.
And, and do you have a recommendation for the, the citation amount? Do we have any, what other, what other things do we currently have parking fines for and how much are they?
Almost all of our parking violations are $50, with the exception of fire lane and handicap, and those are $250.
Okay. So it seems like keeping it in line with other, with other citation amounts. So maybe $50 would be a reasonable amount if that's what most of our other parking citations are.
The, the 24 hour, I, I, I think that's a, a good frame, a timeframe. I had the, the embarrassing experience that the battery on my electric car died. And you can't jumpstart those things.
Wow.
Can't you just disengage the clutch and push it really fast down a hill?
Although if the, although if the battery dies in a charging spot, then presumably you could plug it in, right?
The elect, the 12 volt battery.
Ah, okay. Oh, that, okay.
The starter battery.
Jumpstarting it.
Okay, Chief, do you have enough guidance?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Roberts, please.
I was just going to make a comment about, you know, what we invest our money in. I've talked about this before, but there's other technologies out there like the fuel cell, the hydrogen fuel cell, which, you know, when you look at all the problems here with the charging and everything for, for, you know, battery EVs, I think you got to be careful about how you invest because the fuel cells, I think, really haven't really got started yet. But if they do, I, personally, I think it's a much better technology because hydrogen is the most abundant resource element. And not only, you know, on this planet, but everywhere else, apparently, according to the scientists at NASA or whatever. So, yeah, I think we should be looking at, we shouldn't just invest our public money in one type of car. And we should be looking to have other types. And I, I personally, I think in the long run, the, the fuel cell probably is going to overtake the battery electric. Because if you look at the sales of the battery electrics, only about 6% of the auto sales in the country right now are EVs, battery electric. So, I mean, if that continued, you don't know if that's going to go up or, or what. But you can look back to 1920 when cars were first started and you had about a quarter of the cars that were electric back then. But they didn't take off and take over the whole thing, you know? So now we kind of see the same thing, the same rate of use. So anyway, doesn't have anything to do with, with what you watch, Chief, but it's just, you know, one of them dream things.
Have you seen Who Killed the Electric Car?
Yeah, I've seen that.
It's on Netflix. It talks about the 1920s and the electric car.
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah, it goes way back, I tell you what.
Okay, hey, let's go ahead and move to the next section.
Yep, we jump to the next section. So really here, what I'm, what I'm looking for is some guidance from, from council in terms of our speed monitoring systems. The reason that I, I bring this up tonight, our program operates under the, the original law passed by the state to allow speed cameras in Prince George's County, which was the school zone law. And it's Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We have a number of sites that produce really low numbers of violations. And the reason that's important is because we have, we pay per site fee to our contractor. Right now, that's a manageable cost, but our contract ends in 2025. The contract that we originally piggybacked off of with our company was renewed by the, by Calvert County. So it's a new contract, but the costs are substantially higher. In speaking with our representative from the company, their costs are still lower than many of the other contractors that are out there. But we're going to see a substantial increase in our costs, which means a program now that is, we generate enough violations and, and I hate to use the word revenue, but fines that make it a cost neutral program. We still incur a cost for staff time to, to process the violations and administer the program. But the contract is cost neutral. We will have a contract that is losing money. The, the number of fines and fees will not cover the cost of the contract going forward. And therefore, we will be having to subsidize the contract cost. So we have some options in front of us. We can, we can pare down the number of sites that we have, which will reduce our costs. We can potentially change the parameters of our program. So in Prince George's County last year, the state changed the law to allow us to operate also in residential zones, which is where many of our cameras are already placed. And those could operate 24/7, Monday, seven days a week. So there's some options in front of us and how to make the program a little more self-sufficient without having to be subsidized. It is, it is a traffic safety program, not a revenue program. So we're at least looking to maintain some cost neutrality so that we're not having to subsidize the program with general revenue funds.
So let, let's look at these numbers. But, but Chief, I wanted to ask you, why, why are their costs going up? I remember the discussion with the, about the contract initially. And it was my understanding that they, the company was a turnkey solution. So they, they would actually follow up on the tickets and, and do the collection part of things and we'd get the revenue back. So is, are they finding that they're not having a lot of success in doing that or?
So like the costs of everything, tech, you know, employee costs have increased. The cost of their materials has increased. So their costs are, are increasing. They're going to pass those costs on to their customers. You know, so, so originally, when all of these camera systems were, were initiated 10, 15 years ago, they took a percentage of the citations issued. So they were getting paid, you know, $15 for every citation. The state changed the law and it has to be a flat fee per site. They're not allowed to do the per, per ticket charges. So they kind of rounded all these numbers off to what a, an average per site cost would be, what it costs them. And so that's why these numbers, where were they, where, where were they are? And the company that we've been doing business with gave us a discount because we knew our program was, was low volume. And so they, they kind of helped us out in the last contract. They're not necessarily going to do that in the next contract. So we're going to have to basically get on market. A number of the other vendors have looked at, you know, right now we're at like $5,000 per site. They're between 7,500 and 10,000 per site. So we're, we're looking at a substantial cost increase in the future.
Right, so where it was $15 out of each citation, citations were $50, right?
Citations are 40.
40, 40, and that's across the state.
That's across the state. It's a flat.
I think I've gotten one of those tickets in one of the jurisdictions. So, so now they want 20 or 25?
Well, so it's still, it's, it's not a per citation, it's a flat fee per site. So we will pay a monthly fee for each site. Right now, it's like 5,200 per month per site. And it's going to jump up to close to 7,000 per month per site. So it's a pretty substantial increase for us. And so that's why taking a look at our locations and our sites is important because we have some cameras that are cost neutral and some cameras that are, are being supported by others. So we, we in the police department, through the city manager's office, would like to go through these and take the sites out that are, that are producing low volumes of citations and, and remove those from our cost so that the program can remain cost neutral and we'll be able to have a viable program into the future. The other thing that we would look for council's guidance on is, do you want to expand the program beyond the school zone program that we currently have in effect and look at a residential based program under the new, under the new Maryland legislature, which would allow us to operate inside any residentially zoned area with a speed limit of less than 35 miles an hour? So, so those are the kind of the questions that we're looking for tonight.
Do you know, are neighboring jurisdictions, Berwyn Heights, College Park, New Carrollton, Riverdale Park, are any of them putting up cameras outside of school zones?
Many of them have, yes.
Is, would there be a cost associated with, with moving the cameras? I assume there would be some cost.
So the cameras that we have now are basically portable. They are self-contained within a box and have a couple of car batteries in them that have to be changed out on a regular basis. If we, if we decided to go to a residential based system where they operated for longer periods of time, the company would actually replace all of those cameras with powered units that don't take batteries and take less maintenance on their part. So that, that would be one thing. We can move these cameras. They just sit on a, on a concrete pad that, that was put in place.
And I guess my one thought I was thinking about was that we just did, I know it was just Center City, but we just did that, 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 that speed calming study. I don't know if any of the data that we collected on speeds would indicate any particularly, like this could be another, that could indicate a place where speeding is a problem, that might be a place to put these cameras to, to try to get people to not speed at those places, too.
We, we did a traffic study. We look at speeds throughout the, throughout the city and we reported that. So that we do have speed data throughout the city. The challenge is, well, the, the, there are areas where the, sorry, let me, let me take a step back. The speed study found that most people are adhering to the speed limits. There are sections where there's the speed limit above the 85 percentile. So even within that study, even if you find that 85% of, of motorists are adhering to the speed limit, you get that 15% that are going outside the speed limit. So we, we could look at what that data shows. And, you know, there's some speeding happening on every, every road. It's just, what's that? How, how much of those car, vehicles are? You can see here even our lowest producing, not our lowest producing, but the, the site that has the least amount of citations, you're looking at 622 for 2023 at, at the Hanover Parkway eastbound. That's the lowest. There is some speeding going on. And just based on that number, that's.
It's right by the school. Ms. Pope, you had your hand up for a second.
I just, so there is one on Edmiston that's not listed here. Or did, did you remove that? There was one. The box is there.
The box is there. It's an empty box.
It's an empty box. Well, yeah, I, I figured because I think, yeah. Well, no, I knew, I knew. I just wondered if you, if this is purposely not listed or if, if, you know, just kind of fallen off the.
Is there a cost for, for having those empty boxes?
And just leave it empty. That's fine. It's okay. It's great. I pass this thing every day a few times. And I'm not speeding down that hill, by the way, but.
But it's been working, see? That, that remind, that brings up another alternative. And Chief and I talked about this and we're exploring this idea of having approval for many more sites throughout the city and rotating the cameras. And some, where we can, will have a decoy. Proven to work. People see a box. Sometimes it's just a utility box and they slow down.
I mean, the speed cameras are supposed to be deterrents anyways, right? So.
Ms. McKenna had her, Councilmember McKenna had her hand up before Mr. Roberts.
Yes, I did. A couple of questions. So in 2022, did you put up the camera, was it there the whole year? So I'm just wondering why there was less, less captured in 2022? And then you saw a significant increase in 2023 and then we're seeing it decrease again. I'm wondering what might have changed.
So a lot, a lot of it has to do with, we saw some fluctuation kind of going into the pandemic and then coming back out of it. So some of the numbers coming out of '21 into '22, '23, where people were staying at home and then getting back out on the roads. There, there's some odd fluctuations in those years. But they're generally pretty consistent over about the last five year timeframe and, and those, those lower numbers. And the one thing that you will always see with any sort of automated enforcement is generally over time, you will start with a high number and you will, you will quickly stare down. Particularly anybody who travels those routes on a regular basis will, will know it's there.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
And technology as well, now Waze, you know?
Tells you when there's a speed camera.
And the entire point of the program is to reduce vehicle speeds through those, those zones. And so one of the things that the city manager spoke about was having, having these, these, these zones, right? Where you could put up a speed camera anywhere within a one mile stretch. And, and that's doable by, by council, you could enact speed camera zones. And so we, we would be able to move a camera in that zone, which would allow us kind of a little bit more effective area. Right now, you see speed camera, everybody hits the brakes, they slow down. As soon as they leave it, you can accelerate again. But if there was a one mile stretch around a school or through a high residential area where you knew that the camera could be placed anywhere, you'll slow down through the whole stretch, right? And that's really what you're aiming, aiming for is the biggest impact that you can have in reducing vehicle speeds.
I have one more follow-up question. The, it looks like the camera that's on Hanover Parkway eastbound, what is captured there is also significantly slower. Have you seen a correlation? Because isn't, aren't there speed humps on Hanover Parkway?
So the, yes, the, the camera sits adjacent to some speed bumps.
Right, so is, if you're thinking about where to place it, where you're going to have the biggest return on your investment, wouldn't you put it in a place where there may be not speed humps? That's already a traffic calming.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
I, I will say that, and I believe maybe Councilmember Pope and, and Mayor Jordan were on council when these were enacted. I know, I, I was not here, but I'm, I'm told these locations, some of them were, were specified to us. And so that may not have been most ideal location, but those are the ones that we went with at the time.
Mr. Roberts.
I assume that your, your speed numbers are coming from the cameras, the speed cameras. And plus maybe those little, using the little ones that only tell you how fast you're going.
These are citations.
Citations, okay. Well, you know, I, my fear of all this camera stuff is, you know, some of it's good. But I think the problem is, is, you know, what you're talking about is that, you know, you got a camera and everyone knows where it is. I think, you know, if we don't have some regular enforcement, the problem I see out there is that people are just driving more and more recklessly. It's not just the speeding. I mean, everywhere I go in the city, whether it's around Crescent Road or anywhere else, if you're doing the speed limit, people are coming up, getting on your butt, and then they pass you on, on the shoulder. They pass you on the yellow lines, yellow lines on a curve they pass you, they'll pass you anywhere. So if we're just putting cameras out there, we're only making people slow down at that one spot. You know, from Southway on around to where that camera is, people are flying around there. They're going around the turn and, like I say, they're, they're passing me on the, on the shoulder all the time. I had, one day I was going down there, car came up right behind me. I was doing 25 right there where it turns to 30. Part of it's 25, part is 30. Part of it's twenty-five, part's thirty. One person flies around me on the shoulder, the other one flies around me on the, on the left-hand side. You know, it's a double yellow line. So that's what I'm concerned about, that we're getting so enamored with these cameras that we're forgetting that we need police officers out there doing it the old-fashioned way too. We need to catch these people that are in between the cameras. Because I think a lot of the bad problems is in between the cameras. And like you say, people figure out where they're at. So there's much more, there's problems that can't be solved by cameras, that's the problem. And I, it seems to me that it's getting worse and worse.
I, I've got a couple of thoughts, you know, I have mixed feelings about the speed cameras. But, you know, looking at some of the locations, you know, I, I think we should have the cameras, it's, it's really about safety. So I think the camera locations, if there's some way to actually correlate them with accidents or where pedestrians have been hit, I think that's a good idea. So just knowing the city really well and looking at Crescent Road and Hanover Parkway, the reason why the numbers are going down is because local residents do know where they are and they slow down. Now, on Hanover Parkway, those, the, the ones that are getting tickets, I, I hate to cast dispersions on student drivers or drivers from going to the high school and whatnot, but, you know, I would venture to speculate that some of those speeding tickets are, are people just going way too fast. Because as you said, there's a speed hump. So, you know, if, if you know that there's a speed hump and you know that there's a camera, you're not going to go flying over that. So maybe, maybe it's not the best position. And maybe the boxes, the empty boxes, the decoy cameras are a good idea. Because for our local residents, just as a way of mitigating or encouraging them to slow down, the empty box would probably be effective with our local residents. So with any new sites, I would really like to try and find a way to take a look at where accidents or pedestrians have been hit. Or bicyclists and whatnot, and, and maybe using that as thinking in terms of, of the need for cameras being there as opposed to just where, where we're going to, just ROI.
So one thing that, if, if you decide to change the program or add additional sites, there has to be a public hearing. And, and that's, has to be approved by council. We don't have the authority as the city government to do that without a public hearing, without council's authorization. I would, I would just kind of, our, our kind of direction that we're looking for here is to be able to remove from our, our inventory the three lowest-producing sites. Because as we move into the new contract, we want to make sure that, like, we can remain cost neutral. And that's, that's going to be the biggest thing for us. Like you say, we're already absorbing staff time costs for the program. And then if we have to start absorbing contract cost as well, I mean, that, that's not good for the program. We want it to be able to be, be a positive program that, that takes care of itself. It shouldn't be something we're having to subsidize. Because, because really the goal is, is reduced speeds and traffic safety. So if they're not producing, if nobody's violating the speed limit through those cameras, that means they're doing their job. And, you know, we need to look for some, maybe some other ways to maintain where we are, whether that be through traffic calming or other types of enforcement. But I, I think those will be our, our kind of short-term goal right now. Take a look at that, if it's council's will to come back and talk about residential program, we can, we can bring more information for that. The vendor will do the traffic studies for us to, to identify any other areas that may be in, have, have a, a speeding issue. And then a safety issue to go with it, not just speed. So, so those would be kind of the two things that we would look at if it's council's will for us to bring that back.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. And certainly the two, I don't really see three that are really low, I see two that are really low. And I, I would just say that if we do, if it makes sense to remove those cameras, let's leave the boxes there. Ms. Niesel.
Yes, um, thank you. So you touched on a couple of my questions, pardon me, which was, so right now we have seven, you're trying to whittle it down to four.
Ma'am.
Now, based on those numbers, would the contract, and this is, would we be able to sign a contract? And then change those cameras from the battery-operated to the longer term?
So it, in the next contract, we'll be looking to upgrade the equipment as well in part, as part of that contract. So the company wants to move away from the cameras that they're using now because they're very labor-intensive. They have to come out every day and, and replace all the batteries and everything. So they, they want to get to a different type of camera for us. So that will, that will help on some of those administrative costs. Yeah.
All right, great. And then just echoing what Mayor Jordan had said, I had originally assumed, which now might be up for debate, that the original sites of these cameras were based on need. But I guess I wanted to make sure that if we are moving cameras, it is in places where it wouldn't negatively impact the safety of our residents if they were removed. So if, for example, Cherrywood was a hotspot for driving and even if that falls number five, but it was really, really bad before, you know, just to keep the safety in mind, if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay, great, thanks.
May I approach him?
Yeah, well, I think the chief also answered one of the questions that I was going to ask was what, you know, if we're talking about traffic ordinances tonight, what, what, what would need to, what, what needs to happen in that regard if we're going to do anything? And it sounds like if we were to change it to a residential program, there would be, there would need to be some, some legislation.
Yes, ma'am, we would have to have a public hearing. Based on the state law, we would have to have a public hearing on the, on the change in our program. And then any sites that we selected would have to be approved at that public hearing by council or then, or later voted on by council and approved. And then we have to go through the thirty-day warning process and the advertising process prior to issuance of any citation. So if we chose, for the fun of it, I'm not saying, I'm just picking a random street. So if we decided Research Road needed a camera, before we could install the camera on Research Road, there would have to be a public hearing. Then at session, council would have to vote to approve that device, we would have to advertise it. And we'd have to issue warnings for thirty days. And then, so you, you're talking, you know, you would be in the process of working on something like that for several months prior to any citations being issued.
And, and what would need to happen to remove the four?
That, that is just our, our decision. There's nothing, once we take them down, the site's already approved, you could put it back. But this would just be, you know, an effort on our part to, as a, as a cost savings, to keep the cost neutral.
Okay, but as, in terms of, although maybe it could just be done, is that something we would need to put on as an agenda item? If, if they were, if, if some of these sites were dictated by council in the past, then I don't know if we need to officially, like, remove them or what that process would need to look like.
I, I think from a legal perspective, we don't need to adopt ordinance. I, I think it's a matter of managing that collaborative relationship between the administration and council. That if you, if we propose to remove one of these sites, it would be, we'll bring it to council as a voice vote. Council will get to raise any objection. But I don't see us needing to update an ordinance.
Okay, okay. And it is interesting to me that the, the one ninety-three eastbound has a pretty significant, like twenty-twenty-two was almost twenty-two-hundred, then it went down to seven-seventy and then three-thirty-five. That's, that surprises me a bit that, that that one dropped so much.
Camera must have been out.
But the westbound didn't, didn't change.
It's got to do with the location of the traffic light.
Okay. Is it right after?
It's directly after.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you're headed up a hill, so it, it's not, you, there, you know, when you, when you put these out, the, how you select a location is extraordinarily important. And typically, you'll do a lot of site preparation and selection. You don't want to be near a speed bump or a traffic light. You don't want to be kind of going up or down a hill. You, you try to have a flat, level piece of road that, that is got a long kind of site path to it. Those, those are sort of your best locations. Anytime you have something that would naturally bring people to slow down or stop, that, then, that, that's the traffic light or the speed bump is doing the work for you. And you didn't probably need to put a camera there in the first place.
Well, I think just, just, just for myself, I, I think I'm, I'm supportive of reevaluating these locations and reducing the number if we need to. Or considering whether it makes sense to add locations or do some sort of rotation, I think that makes sense. I think the purpose of these cameras is to get people to slow down. And if they're not, if there aren't citations, then it's doing it. Or if we've done other things that cause people to slow down, then maybe the camera doesn't need to be there anymore.
Councilmember Poppy.
Just for clarity, the, the cameras that you would propose removing would be three hundred Crescent, seventy-seven-hundred Hanover and the, the one ninety-three eastbound? Okay.
And if we do reevaluate where they go, I just want to make sure we're taking into consideration all areas of this city, right? In that there isn't necessarily a larger proportion in one area and not the other. So I know we have to look at, obviously, traffic where we think we might have the most violations and things like that. But we also want to make sure we're, we're giving equal attention to all areas.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's, let's on, move on to the next topic.
So the, the next one we have is the, the automated stop sign enforcement. And we've talked about this a little bit previously at some, at some council meetings, so not a lot of this is going to be new for you. But we're looking for some direction from council onto the program itself. As you know, the Maryland Transportation Article was amended last year to include stop sign monitoring systems in Prince George's County. Some key points, it must be in a school zone, it's a civil penalty to the vehicle owner of forty dollars. And the locations have to be approved by county council. These were the, the pilot locations that we set out, and each one of these was a seven-day observation period. And it gives you an idea of the number of vehicles per day that transited that intersection, the total number of vehicles that did not come to a full and complete stop or violations, and the percentage of the vehicles that violated the stop sign. So this will give you an idea of what those totals were. We see some locations, you know, at, at every location, you had less than fifty percent of the people actually coming to a full and complete stop. Some of them were worse than others, eighty, ninety percent. So is this a program that is council's direction for us to continue to move forward on? If that is, we need to also move forward with a school zone regulation. And so those are, those would be two companion pieces of city code that we would have to enact. And then request authority from the county council for the locations that we ultimately select.
That would be in terms of the school zones or would be the specific locations where the stop signs would be?
The school zones is solely up to the city. Under, under Maryland law, we can designate a school zone. And that's regardless of the stop sign ordinance. But to have a stop sign program, it has to be within a designated school zone. So we would need to designate our own school zones. And then we would be able to operate those cameras within those school zones.
Okay, so we could do this incrementally. We could designate the school zones while we continue to consider or set the program up so that we are issuing not the forty-dollar fines, but more a warning for a period of time, just to see what the impact would be. Is that possible?
Probably no, because the, there's a vendor involved and, and there's a cost associated with deploying that camera for a long period of time to the vendor. So if it's a program that council wants to move forward with, we would, we would first do the school zone ordinance. And then, just like with the speed monitoring systems, we would have to have a public hearing on the stop sign monitoring camera system and the locations that we propose to place them. And then after the conclusion of that public hearing, council would have to pass an ordinance and vote. And we would then send those locations to county council for their authorization. And then we would be able to have the actual cameras themselves installed. We would advertise, the cameras would go up, they would have a thirty-day warning period, and then they would start issuing citations.
Yeah, I, I have a concern that I'd like to hear a little bit more from, from the vendor just in terms of how, how we go about clearly defining and delineating the line where someone needs to stop. I think in our previous conversations, you, you had mentioned that there's the ability maybe to work with the sensitivity of, of these cameras, just in terms of what, what is a complete and full stop? And where, where the wheels have to be in relation to the crosswalk of the line?
So, so generally there's a white stop line painted on the roadway, it's typically before you get to a crosswalk. I think pretty much all of our intersections have them, Public Works puts them in when, whenever the roads are paved, then they do update painting them. If we were going to install the camera at those locations, one of the things that we would need to ensure prior to operation is that that stop line was clear and delineated and freshly painted so that there was no question of where it goes. The cameras, you know, when you talk about what delineates a stop and what doesn't, I think the difficulty in, in creating a subjective standard is just that it becomes subjective. So if I have three officers reviewing citations and Officer McKinnney is very strict and says you, wheels must come to a full and complete stop, but Officer Pope is like, eh, it was close enough. Now I'm issuing tickets under different standards and I, I have to have a singular standard. If the state didn't define something other than a full and complete stop at the stop line, then we would, I think, be negligent. I don't necessarily, that's a strong word, but I think it would be irresponsible of us to start adopting a different standard. With the speed monitoring cameras, the state adopted a standard of eleven over, right? And that's statewide and everybody has to abide by that. So it's not the city of Greenbelt deciding, we want to be twelve over or thirteen or ten. The state set a standard and that's what we, we adhere to. But with these, the standard is what applies to a typical stop, which is a complete and total stop.
Well, when we say stop at the line, how, how wide does that line, does the line like one inch or does it could be two, two feet or?
And now you, you, you know, did they stop a foot before, did they stop direct line? That, that's not, you know, that's not the question. The question is, you know, as they pulled up to it, did they come to a full and complete stop, right? You know, did they stop, did the car in front of them stop and then they stopped and then they didn't stop, right? So that, there's, that one doesn't count. You have to pull up in proximity to the stop sign stop line, come to a full and complete stop, and then proceed through the intersection.
Tagging along doesn't.
Excuse me, yeah, you can't tag along.
It's going to be in a news review again, just wait.
The other car stopped, doesn't count.
So I have a question.
Councilmember Poppy and then Ms. Pope.
All right, I, I have a couple of questions. The first is, we have the, the suggested school zones within a half a mile as the crowfies from the school. Is that a state regulation that it's one-half mile? Okay, and then I also noticed that, so in, in looking at, in looking at the map that Mr. Segworth drew here, it doesn't look like that Southway at Ri, that Southway at Ridge is quite inside of the school zone. It looks like it's just maybe just out of it, or maybe it's just in, I don't know.
So it kind of depends on where you measure from, right? And I, I don't, I mean that in, in an honest way, it's like.
Even when I was looking at it, I'm like, is it in, is it out? I don't know.
They're approximations.
Right, okay.
So they're not exact measurements and are approximations. And when we would do that, we would have to get exact.
Very close.
Yes, it's very close.
Really close, so.
And again, these are from the center of those pieces of property or the building on that property. So again, they're approximations.
And you guys are still testing some other sites right now, right? Is that?
We're done with the testing.
You're done with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Are, are there other locations other than this?
There's one other location I didn't include on this, but there's one other location.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for now, thanks.
Ms. Pope?
So anyways, thank you for explaining this question about stopping, not stopping. How much discretion do we have on our rules and fines? Because I asked the same question last time, but for some reason in the news review, it said I asked if we could, if it would be allowable to roll through the stop. Of course, it's not allowable to roll through a stop, I know that. But when you mentioned that we had some discretion in some way, how we, how we, you know, the definition of stopping and not stopping, that's actually what I was asking. And maybe I came through a little bit confused, that, that happens on occasion. But anyways, thank you for explaining that again. Because I did want to mention again the guidelines and are we going by state or, or how is this going to work? So you all answered that for me. And what is the definition of stops? And who is watching and who is evaluating the footage? That was another question, so. Because like you said, one person may be a little bit more lenient and the other person may not be so lenient. So we do have to, I understand, we do have to have a definition, you know, and, and go by that for everyone, of course. And school zones, yeah, well, Ms. Poppy just asked that question, so you just answered that as well. Thank you.
Ma'am.
I have one more question, sorry that I forgot to ask. Would this be a cost-neutral program?
That would be the goal, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, a question about the school zones, because the diagram includes Magnolia, but the, the, the listing of the, of this proposed ordinance doesn't include Magnolia. I know not all of them, that Magnolia school zone is in Greenb... I know not all of that Magnolia school zone is in Greenbelt, but can we designate the part of that half mile radius that is within Greenbelt as a school zone?
When I drafted the sample for you, I intentionally did not include it because that's a question I would need to consult with the city attorney on to find out if, since the school is not within the corporate limits of the city, can we establish a school zone for the portion that is actually within the city? So the sample ordinances that you have freely admitted, I drafted those. So they would need to go to the city attorney for actual, you know, real language and done on the appropriate legal fashion before it would come back to council. And our attorney, I think, would be able to answer that question for us.
Okay. So maybe we can speak with the county about how to designate that area as a school zone and given us enforcement authority on our section. So just looking at the zones, and they have to be round? Or could they be some other shape or they got to be round?
Okay, now we're, now we're again, now we're subject again. And where do we begin and where do we stop, okay? Because...
Well, it could be square. Hey, but seriously, so like with the Roosevelt High School zone, you know, the area that's north of Greenbelt Road, there's only one stop sign and that's at the intersection of Mandan and Hanover. So really, the areas where students would be crossing, there just aren't a lot of stop signs. So are you proposing to actually put new stop signs in?
We're not proposing to add any stop signs. These just represent the schools and the zones around them, regardless of whether there is stop signs within those areas or not. So these are the, what would you see as the maximum area for school zones in the city? Recognizing that like around Eleanor Roosevelt, on that particular area, there are very few stop signs. There's one or two. We wouldn't necessarily want to add any stop signs just for enforcement purposes. And we would only identify those intersections that we believe have a high violation rate and are in close proximity to the schools and heavy pedestrian traffic.
Right, and I guess I wasn't kidding necessarily about the circle thing. You take Greenbelt Elementary School and a lot of that area is actually in the Ag Center. So I mean, that's, there's no reason to designate that as a school zone. But if you move the circle or move the area a little bit further south, then...
So just keep kind of, I guess, maybe ignore the circles and think about this. If it's within, outside of the incorporated limits of the city, we can't do anything with that. So the circle just represents a close proximity to what is a half mile of those areas. And when we actually would do the school zone requirements, what we would do in the ordinance is go street by street, block by block, and list each 100 block that is being designated. Like, we wouldn't count on this map. We would say the 100 block of Ridge, the 200 block of Ridge, the 300 block of Research. We will actually, in the ordinance itself, break out each 100 block that would be part of that designation. So that you would then not necessarily need the circles. You could look at a map and say, well, we've designated the 100 block of Research as a school zone. And there it is on a map. And you could use red lines on a map versus circles, what have you. So there's different ways to show it. This was just an easy kind of visual to get to see what it looked like.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protophe?
Yeah, and so I know the cameras that were being used for the pilot were movable. So when around, how many would you, is there a proposal for how many you would suggest we should have if we choose permanent locations?
I'm not sure I could give you that recommendation right now. I would think there's at least four locations that we would recommend to you ultimately as sites to move forward on.
Other questions?
Stop sign camera on Spring Hill Drive. I think there needs to be a speed camera, quite honestly, but on its strategy by the school, because in front of the school, that's very dangerous, yeah.
So City Manager Someron, in working with Chief Bowers, when do you think, if there's enough information here, when do you think these issues would be coming back around to council? January, February?
I think it's a matter of timing. With the first meeting in January, you would be voting on two pieces of legislation. So we wouldn't, we could either introduce it at that meeting or wait until the following meeting to introduce it.
Okay.
But we could turn this around in the next 30 days.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Bowers. This is very instructive. It looks like you've got a video up there, though.
You've seen the video. That's a still photo just so, from the, of what the camera intersection looked like. But we showed you some videos last time and they're the same ones. The other piece that we would ultimately talk about when we get there is what part of this enforcement piece, you know, the vendor has the option to make the dashboard a public dashboard so that if you violated it, somebody else could play the videos and sit at home and go, there goes Councilmember McKenny through the stop sign. She wasn't looking, side to side on her.
Yeah, she goes again, oh, man.
And so, you know, that would be a question is, you know, is that something that council would want to continue as a public piece or just merely as a backend piece that only city staff use to issue the citations and send out?
And actually, a follow up to that, because I think the Hyattsville ordinance mentions the idea of the, I think, I don't have that page open, but that the violator, the person who violated the stop sign camera, gets a copy of the recorded image. And that may, and so would they get a link to the video? Or would they get a still image like you get when you get one of the speeding?
Just like if you were to receive a red light ticket from us, there's, in addition to the still photo of your vehicle proceeding through, there is a short video clip that goes with it and you get a link to your violation. It only shows yours and you would be able to see your vehicle proceeding through that intersection. You go, oh, yeah, and then you can pay your citation.
I've gotten some of the speeding cameras, I've never gotten a red light one, so...
Yeah, the speeding cameras, we don't do the video clip with, only the red light cameras.
And then sort of an unrelated follow up, are the license plate reader cameras operational yet?
So the cameras themselves are installed. We are waiting on the integration piece with MCAC to go live with them. We're working out some of the requirements that council's asked. We have signage ordered that will be in shortly, that will go on the polls. And then we're finishing up the policy piece end of that. And we're working with our contractor and the county on the integration to MCAC. Once that's up, then we'll be able to actually turn them on and start collecting data.
Just one final thing before we take questions from the public. So the vendor who is, would be working with us, are they working with neighboring jurisdictions?
So there's one vendor that does stop sign monitoring and that's a company called Avio. And they are working with all of the other municipalities in the county.
Are they working with other counties in Maryland as well?
So the only county that's currently allowed stop sign monitoring cameras is Prince George's County.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Poppy?
Oh, Danielle had a question, I heard that first.
More of a request. We did hear some from the Greenbelt Station residents that once that does go in, if there could be some communication with the residents. I know at times you have been on the HOA or your deputy chief has been on the HOA meetings so that they can understand how that will work, when that, when the timeline is, and as well as to get some additional data from the last time that you all put the speed monitoring in on those roads too. It'd be great to get an update.
I'll check with planning on the speed stuff we should have. And I'll definitely, we're planning on our 2025 calendar of meetings. So probably be something for Greenbelt Station outside of your regular HOA meeting.
Jim, please.
Yeah, if you know, do you know which municipalities already have their cameras up and functioning? And do you have sort of a projected timeline of actually? I mean, you talked about the steps it would take to, there are many, to get our cameras if we, you know, vote to approve this ordinance, to get the cameras up and running. But do you know about how long it would take?
Just maybe, depending upon how fast council would want us to proceed, we would need to do a public hearing piece. And I'm not a council, like, etiquette person. So I don't know if that public hearing takes place during a meeting or at a work session. And maybe Mr. Someron could speak to that more than I can. Once that happens, then we would introduce the ordinance and some version of those meetings occurring. So as he said, Mr. Someron said, let's say the end of January, we pass the ordinances. We'll work with the vendor at that point and they'd probably have their units installed within about 30 days, which would then begin the 30 day warning period. So potentially, you're talking early spring, late spring to actually be...
End of the school year.
Yes, ma'am, before the end of the school year, they could potentially be on. As far as what other municipalities, only one other municipality had a functioning system that was actually issuing citations. The others are still in various stages of approving legislation, contracts and things like that. And I believe that was, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe it was District Heights that has them issuing citations. I could be mistaken on that, I can confirm and get back to you. But I do know that I think other municipalities are all on the same kind of track we are right now.
That's great, thank you.
Councilmember Pope?
My question is, have you presented this to Public Safety Advisory Committee yet? Or are you planning on sharing this information?
We spoke with Public Safety on last Tuesday. Gave them the same information, so they have it and so they're aware.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Well, I wasn't able to attend because we had our legislative dinner that night, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's see, questions from the public? Mr. Orleans, did you have your hand up?
I did, yes, thank you. I have said many times that I don't like, I don't like, so it doesn't matter.
I'm so sorry, can you? Thank you.
I don't like the proliferation of cameras that we seem to be accepting. But that aside, given that I agree pedestrians should not be struck by vehicles, maybe I might concede that the deployment of cameras to prevent that from occurring is a reasonable solution. I don't know, debate that with myself. Couple times tonight, it's been emphasized that the chief of the department, the city, wants a cost neutral program. By that, I interpret it to mean that we shouldn't be spending more than we're gaining in revenue from violators. No real sense has been expressed that I've heard that we shouldn't be gaining too much revenues from catching violators simply for the purposes of obtaining a lot more money and revenue from violators. I have a sense that with regard to speed monitoring, the cameras thus deployed, and I'm looking at this slide in the handout, a number of violations in calendar years 22 and 23 and year to date this year, where it's thought the violations were too few, that maybe they should be moved to somewhere else to catch more violators, suggests to me that we're interested in observing the violations so as to collect more revenue. But that aside as well, how many of these violations were processed through court? How many were actually convicted of the charge of speeding? How many were dismissed? There's no real understanding to be gleaned from this slide of that. So do we know?
Off the top of my head, I do not know.
Well, constructively, if it returns to council or especially if there's to be a public hearing, we should have a sense of that. I'm particularly reminded in the appendix to the traffic calming study, the police department, Greenbelt's police department, based on state information, cited a heck of a lot of hit and runs in Greenbelt. And when I looked at that page in the appendix, for the life of me, couldn't remember ever reading in the news review or hearing about a substantial number of hit and runs in Greenbelt. It was then suggested to me by staff, that, not police staff, but police staff, that, and I think subsequently it was reinforced by police staff, that these were a more likely vehicle hit and runs. A vehicle traveling the street, hit another vehicle and just left. But nonetheless, if we're reporting, if it's being reported that there are a number of incidents occurring, we should have a better sense of those incidents than not. Lastly, apparently the speed, the school zone cameras thus deployed are not catching violators. They're catching because they know citations are being issued, but they're observing violations. And with regard to the camera at Southway and Ridge, it does not seem to be to fall within a school zone. It's of great interest, it's to me, and it's been expressed in council quite a lot recently, that that's a high incident intersection. But what is the camera doing at Southway and Ridge since it's not in a school zone?
Okay, thank you.
You would like us to respond to any of it? The question of the Southway location, the chief clarified that very well, that the radius, the half mile radius, is from the center of the property. Roosevelt High School is a very large property. So if you measure from any, from outside the center, within the property lines, it encompasses that intersection of Southway.
Yeah, Mr. Orleans? Well, this has been a very interesting work session, a very important work session. I appreciate the briefing and the suggestions about school zones, stop sign cameras and also the speed cameras. You know, it's safety first. It's really about trying to make sure that our residents are safe. Pedestrians, cyclists, so council will take up this issue. And also for the electric charging stations, just being thoughtful about where we are putting them and designing an ordinance that is fair, but at the same time alleviates challenges with people getting to the EV station. So I appreciate your presentation tonight and all you do. You mentioned calendars before, and so this is off the subject a little bit. Please, are you doing a police calendar this year?
No.
No, okay.
I mean, my calendar of events for the year that I...
You said calendar.
Yeah, no, I call it my tour of the city. Every year, I try to make my way through a community meeting in as many of the different, either HOAs or sections of the city as I can, starting in Center City, Greenbelt Station, Greenbrier, Windsor Green, Franklin Park. You know, so there's about eight different stops on the tour. And I try to avoid the middle of summer because that's when people are on vacation. So start in January, working my way on a calendar in each section of the city as we go through.
I thought you might be talking about one of those holiday calendars.
Don't do the fire department calendar.
Officers of Greenbelt. But Shop with a Cop is coming up. So how can people, if they want to contribute to that, how can they do it?
You can contact our public information officer, Mr. Rico Dennis. And Shop with a Cop is the 21st of December on a Saturday morning at the Target. Next, tomorrow, we have our Cops Kids basketball game at Spring Hill Lake Rec Center. So you're all welcome to come join us there, it should be a good time. Have a good turnout with the kids, it's a great time as long as as nobody gets a pulled knee or a bad hamstring or any of those things that go with playing basketball. It should be a lot of fun. And then, you know, we kind of wrap up the year. It's been a good year and then we'll get started again next year. You know, with our community policing efforts, particularly the team, Officer Alvarez, Officer Ramon, they host about a half dozen events a year, whether the Mental Health Walk, the youth program we do over the summer, the week long program we do. So it keeps us really busy, particularly planning for each one. You start months in advance planning the next event. So it's a lot of effort, a lot of work and couldn't do it without those guys.
Well, thank you so much. And this time, let's go ahead and wrap things up. And is there, there's an information on, Mr. Someron?
We, yeah, yes, we'd like to discuss a bit. And we don't have to go into great detail tonight, but we do have, as we're closing out the year, we have money that we need to encumbered and disperse that's been set aside for fire department services, fire emergency personnel. So we have the requests from the Berwyn Heights that I have shared with council and we need to make a decision. So I welcome your thoughts. You can send them back to me via email or if you want to have any discussion now or at any point in the near future. From the funding allocation, council has approved the $100,000. So that's been set aside. And as I had committed in that council meeting where council approved the allocation and the funding, we committed to have an open dialogue about when and how. and the funding, we committed to have an open dialogue about when and how that money is being distributed. So I welcome your feedback.
So Berwyn Heights is pretty much covering us for the most part.
From a volunteer service, Berwyn Heights have been in service for over 80% of the time, and I received a letter from Chief Green today. I'll send that over to council this evening. They've been able to staff engines and ambulance for a significant amount of time, over 80% of the time.
My inclination would be to support them in any way possible, because our station, unfortunately, is without the firefighters.
Just as an FYI, I see, I received another piece of correspondence from Chief Green tonight. Okay, well, at this time, let us move into an executive session. Mayor Protem?
I think we need to open the special meeting first.
I hereby call this meeting, a special meeting of the Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Good evening, Ms. McKinney. Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Niesel?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Okay.
I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Section 3-305B1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one, to discuss the appointment, performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the city manager's evaluation. In addition to council, city manager Jose Sommaron, as well as Director of Human Resources, Dwayne Martinez, will be in the room in person, and I believe our consultant, Adewunni Lewis, from MGT, will be joining us virtually. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Niesel has seconded. If there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The time is 9:02.
I think, like, you'd host, Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
She's in the room. She wasn't in the room.
No, she's not at the moment.
She's going to wait for Dwayne. Is the restroom or water or anything like that?
I would like to put my water bottle. Okay. Yeah, don't lock it yet. It's our consulting.